The Claxton will call the August 25, 2022, meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Pablo Serna.
Here.
Carrie Kahler.
Here.
Scott Long.
Here.
Judah Ross.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
And Greg Sherry won't be attending tonight.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum. Item number two, citizen comments. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Not at this time.
All right, then we will move right on to item number 3A. Consider action to approve meeting minutes from the July 2028, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Did everyone had a chance to read them? Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, I will consider a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please let the record show, passed unanimously. 3B, consider action to appoint a Planning and Zoning Commission member as its representative on the Historic Landmark Commission, HLC. Ms. Bills, would you give us some information about that?
Sure. So, in the makeup of the Historic Landmark Commission in their, in chapter nine of the B-3 code, it requires one of the Planning and Zoning, or one, yeah, Planning and Zoning Commission representative on the HLC. Pablo does sit on the HLC, but he actually fills one of the other seats. So, there's an opening for another Planning and Zoning Commission member on the HLC. And if...
And they do...
They do. So, they review certificates of appropriateness. So, those are any buildings that are deemed, have been designated, local, state, or federal historic landmark, or if they're in our nationally registered Bastrop Commercial District downtown, properties that are making exterior changes have to get a certificate of appropriateness. And then, in the larger Iredelle Historic District, if you're looking to get approval outside of what the code allows, that we can't approve administratively, you can appeal to the HLC on those properties as well. And then, they also are the, they recommend to City Council properties that have come forward that want to be deemed historic, are locally designated historic, they'll make that determination, make the recommendation to council, and when council approves or disapproves the designation.
And how often do they meet?
They meet generally, they're scheduled to meet once a month. If we don't have any applications for that month, as we did last month, then the meeting gets canceled. So, it's generally driven by applications. So, typically, we have about nine a year.
And how long is a member's term?
It will run with your term on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, when you, your term is up on the P and Z, then it will have to appoint a new person.
Is there anyone interested in serving on the HLC? I don't hear anybody besides Pablo. You can tell them how much, you can tell them how much fun it is.
It's an important job.
It is an important job.
I mean, I'll say another thing about it. Sometimes it's just like, look at this fence, you know? And it can be as simple as looking at fences, or, you know, that's been something that's come up, and we've realized, you know, we're not really clear on what we think an authentic Bastrop fence looks like. So, I think those are the kind of things we're looking at. So, it, I think it's, seems like a small thing, but I think the details are the things that matter. Good people there, very passionate. I know we butt heads a little bit, but I'm really appreciative of the passion of people that are there. So, I think you'll be very pleased to meet some people that have been here for a long time and really care about Bastrop and history. I've learned a lot.
Yeah, I just looked over there and saw you weren't...
Probably everyone on Facebook just told us we can't, they can't hear.
It's really good. You should serve on it.
In summary.
Okay. Is there anyone interested in serving on HLC? Deafening quiet here.
I see. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll talk to the city secretary and the mayor, but I, we do have, I think, the option of, I don't think it's an absolute that someone P and Z has to serve, and Pablo is on, so I think we may be able to kind of wiggle that around and open the application up to people at large.
You were on as a, as a, just, just as a citizen? Or, are you an architect?
He was the architect, yeah.
There's a few positions that you have a required expertise?
Yeah, there's several positions that it's a preference, that we have an architect, a real estate agent, someone that owns a commercial historic property, someone that owns a residential historic property, and then a citizen's that large, I believe. But it does give the ability to appoint people not strictly following those guidelines.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, then you do make some tours, you do go out to the properties, you do site visits? Is that correct?
You're encouraged to bring forth some properties that you think are going to be important, that maybe aren't protected right now. Give you an example, the, it's the old German...
Schoolhouse?
It was, it was a dance, dance hall, I think.
Casino?
At casino. Yeah, I think it's on the plan as a casino. It's at Farm and Train Track.
Fayette.
Fayette, yeah.
Fayette, yeah.
So, that's something we're looking at. I actually went out and talked to the homeowner, and he's interested, and we just need to do some paperwork and things like that. So, it's a little bit more than just showing up for a meeting, but most of the time, it's just going to a meeting and, and looking at some drawings that people have prepared. And they're trying to do the right thing. I think we're trying to help them do the right thing and try to be clear about it. So, I think there's some really, it's like where the rubber meets the road there. I think here, it's pretty big. It's, we're not meeting the public too much. I try to, I mean, it's sometimes. It's a good, it's a good position. I would highly recommend it, if you have the time.
And it meets the same week, a different day of this meeting?
Yes, it meets the third Wednesday of the month.
Okay. And we make the last Thursday.
We're the last Thursday of the month on this board, which moves around depending on how many Thursdays we have in a month.
I'll consider it. I'm on two other boards besides this one.
Okay.
So, I need to like be sure that I can absolutely commit the time, but I will definitely think about it. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll look and see. So, we're in the application period right now for boards and commissions that the mayor's considering. So, additionally, if your term was up and you haven't reapplied and you wanted to reapply, applies to those of you who applied midstream, I would just submit your previous application because it's probably the same. Make sure you send those, because I know Judah, Scott, and, I can't remember the third person, but there was a third, Ishmael was up. There you go. So, if you haven't already, send in your applications for P and Z.
It meets the same, just the day before this one?
It meets the third Wednesday, so the week and a, a week and a day.
Third Wednesday. Okay.
Week and a day. Some, some months might be two weeks before.
Okay. I'm, I'm open to it if, if somebody else, if you are, if you're conflicted, I'm open to joining.
Go for it.
Okay.
So, do you want...
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
So, I'll put this on the agenda for next meeting, so, if that works.
We'll make it official.
Okay.
Okay, cool. And thank you, Carrie. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, item 3C. Consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1F, Section 3, preliminary plat being 51.855 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bank survey, abstract number five, located east of Republic Drive, within the voluntary extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit 8. Ms. Bills.
Uh-oh. I must have pulled the wrong one. I think the slides are hidden. Just one second. We have a little technical difficulty. There we go. Technology defeats me once again. So, this is the Colony MUD 1F, Section 3. You can see they're continuing up the northern arm that goes back to 969. So, previously, we've done Sections 1 and 2 of Section 1F, right there. The, one of the things that, that'll be in the next 1F4, they are required to have a road that extends outside of the colony in the next section that provides that access to the adjacent properties. But for this specific property, it's 51.855 acres. They'll be putting 102 residential lots in this section with six non-residential lots that are PUEs and drainage easements. The preliminary plat proposes to extend Republic Drive, so whereas Sam Houston was the main drive that went through the lower part, this is, Sam Houston eventually comes, becomes gated into the original section of the colony, so this is what, Republic Drive is now, connects Sam Houston to the northern arm of the colony. And they're also extending Kingswood Drive. The other streets within the section just are cul-de-sac streets that are only for this section, but Kingswood Drive connects, and Republic Drive connects down to the next section. And the staff recommends approval of this plat, and it's preliminary, so the next steps will be the public improvement plans.
So, I have a newbie question.
Okay.
Living in Pecan Park and all of the construction that's going on there, and getting in and out of the neighborhood is going to be a real pain, once everything gets finished. Are you comfortable, I mean, I understand this is probably built, is being built to code, but are you comfortable with the fact that there's going to be enough egress and ingress into these neighborhoods where we don't have like major bottlenecks for traffic?
So, so, the colony, it's a municipal utility district, and this was set up under a consent agreement in, I had forgotten what year, 2008, I think. And in that consent agreement, they had a conceptual plan that showed, at the time, actually, three connections in and out of the development. One, one on 969, one on the other arm of 969, and then one back out to 1209. Over the years, as we've reviewed the plat, we have gone back in, and we have an agreement with the county and the developer that they're providing additional access throughout the development. And then, I can't remember if I included in your packet the, sometimes I do, there's a larger schematic, and they show several points where they're connecting to the subdivisions, or future subdivisions to the north and south. So, in the lower arm, they're actually in the process now of designing and building several of those connections that'll be public. The county will maintain them, and they'll provide access. So, they have, I think, three access points from the colony into Valverde. They'll also have three, I think, connections to the north on that arm, and then similarly here, they'll have several connections. See, as they go up, there's, I think, another, so they'll have to have one connection across here, and then another one further up. So, fire code does, at minimum, requires two ways in and out for more than 30 homes, and then it's kind of up to the local jurisdictions, you know, scale after that. At the time this was developed, we did not have a strict connectivity policy. Now, we do, but this is under the agreement that was approved with the original consent agreement. And then, that has been modified over time, split the tri-county agreement, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Please let the record show that it passed unanimously. Item 3D. Consider action to approve Young Subdivision Block 14, Lot 1, a replat of Young Subdivision Block 4, located at the northwest corner of SH 95 and Gordon Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown on Exhibit 8. Ms. Bills.
Yes, so, this is just right off in 969, in the Young Subdivision, the area, this was a subdivision that was plotted in, I want to say, the 60s, but I might, might have been the 40s. It was originally plotted with 30-foot right-of-way streets through the subdivision. Some of those streets, as you can see, the right-of-ways are unopened currently, and there may be opportunity in the future to build those streets. The applicant is looking at developing this tract, which this entire block, which was square at some point, was Block 14. They didn't get back, they didn't go down to the lot levels on the original plat, and so, over time, they've been improperly deed-divided out. So, this is a replat to correct that deed-division that happened in the last, probably, 10 years. So, what once was one, one block is now, one lot is now three, and so, that's correcting that. And with this subdivision, they're, they're also dedicating some additional right-of-way for Gordon and Elgin Streets, because our standard now is to have 55.5 feet of right-of-way, and that'll give us that, some additional width, because the streets right now, some of them don't meet fire code as well as they should through that area, because with 30 feet of pavement, or 30 feet of right-of-way, it's a very tight pavement cross-section. And additionally, since that is the rightward intersection with 95, it gives some more room there to, to line up that intersection in the future. And gives more room to install storm drainage and other things that may be needed. This area is very flat and doesn't have any, doesn't have great, doesn't have storm drains, and the ditches are a little shallow. So, the city's been out there over the last five years, using a lot of the unopened right-of-ways to help the drainage. And this area is, yeah, fully in the city, and it's on city water, wastewater, and electric. And that's what the plat will look like when it's done. You can see the, the additional right-of-way dedication. It's about 12.75 feet on both the north and the south, which is their half of the remainder of the 55.5. Any questions?
And staff recommends approval.
Staff recommends approval.
Any questions?
So, do we know how many homes they plan on having there?
The, the plan at present, they have, they have to get this done before they can turn in the plans. This area is zone P4 mix, so it allows for a mix of residential and commercial, and they're looking to do a commercial woodshop with, I think, a triplex on it. So, kind of a live-work situation where people could live in one building and work in the woodshop.
We have a question? You'd like to?
So, I'm gonna, want to talk about fire, the Watland Rubber and Interface Code, and, and the fact that we just had a fire recently. We are approving right now, like this subdivision is within, pretty close to the forest, and if this were done in other municipalities that we're in, a zone that we are in, which is fire compromised, I feel like we really haven't done our job. I think, and I brought it up before, it's as simple as just saying it has to comply with certain sections of a code that's been out since the mid-2015. So, there's some, there's some guidance out there from other communities in Colorado, California, anybody in the West that's dealing with fires, and we have also. And it's as simple as you just have to cover up your leaves a little differently. You have to put some siding on, no open decks. Roofs have to comply with a certain rating, but they're probably going to do it anyway. And then, you just have to keep some vegetation, you know, some maintenance. So, none of that is written into this particular subdivision on the notes. I just double-checked it. And that, that's fine, because they're complying with the way we have it set right now, and I think we have set the bar really low in Bastrop, considering we had a really bad fire, and we're approving subdivisions and plats and things with no additional improvements to the fire code. I mean, we can say our fire code is better, but our fire code is the fire code that you find in Galveston, Corpus Christi, Dallas, so it doesn't address living close to a forest. And I think, just kind of using this as the point to say this, that I think we're really failing the community, and I think, I put it back on, on the council, I've said it before, they need to do something. The fire chief needs to do something. We're approving a plat, we can't do anything about it. And it's great that they're going to do this, but I think we're failing the community.
Thank you. Do you know if there are any plans, either through the fire department or the city council, to take a look at our fire code?
There, there is a plan to look at the, it's, we call it the WUI code. They did look at it back in 2019, when we updated all the other international codes, and their, the construction standards board at the time had concerns, that they wanted more discussion on, and didn't feel comfortable recommending approval of it at the time. And that's been something that is on our, on our schedule, and it just hasn't risen to the top of the, the pile yet. But it's, it's definitely one that our fire chief is working on, and our building official, that we, we think we have a way to adopt it. We need to get it through the process. And part of the, one of the things is, we're actually lacking quorum on our construction standards board, too, right now.
With the commission's approval, I'd like to send a message to those folks that are looking at this, to urge and request that it bubble up higher on their list of priorities to look at. Because I think Pablo's correct. We've, we dodged a bullet just recently with the Pine Pond Fire, and with the climate change, doesn't look like we're going to be getting anything but rain and heat, and hopefully a little rain from time to time. So, I agree with you that it needs to have more impact and more concern. So, if you send an urgent request...
I will.
I will appreciate that. Given that...
Can I ask a question? I mean, it has nothing to do with this. We can come back to this later if you would like. You want to finish this, and I can then ask my question?
Go ahead.
In the same vein of resiliency, and again, this is a newbie question.
Go right ahead.
With floodplain codes, are we, are we feeling comfortable about, you know, where we're headed with flooding in the city? Because it's coming. It's just a matter of when and how bad.
So, the city is actually, for the last, I think, eight months, we've been working on a drainage master plan that is almost, I think, to the finish line. I think we should be bringing that to council for adoption here in the next couple of months. And so, with that, they looked at our existing storm drain systems, and looked at different areas for improvements to the system. Additionally, even prior to that, we've done several studies throughout the city for Gil's Branch and Piney Creek, that took a look at both of those watersheds, and we have a plan for Gil's Branch on how to improve that watershed. Now, we're just looking for the money to pay for it. That's the, it's a fairly big-ticket item, and that improvement, I think, we, I think we've run the numbers, it would pull about 99 properties out of the floodplain if we were able to get that project done. In addition, just this year, with those studies, has been turned over to FEMA, and FEMA has, they're updating the flood insurance maps, the firms, this year. They should be effective by December 1st. That shows the most up-to-date floodplain, and that, that data's been available since last year, and we've actually already put it into effect. So, new properties coming in have to follow the new data. Our codes call for us to use the best available data, which that data is our best available, because some of these properties, you know, on December 1st, if they don't build correctly, they will be in the floodplain and possibly not eligible for flood insurance. And then, we're working on right now, updating our flood prevention ordinance. That's one of the things FEMA's requiring us to do to stay current, I think, with our flood insurance. So, that's one of the things people don't always understand, why do we have such strict rules on the floodplain and how you build? So, in the floodplain, you know, if the water, they say the, the base flood level is going to be two feet above the ground, we say you have to build your house two feet above that, so your house ends up four feet off the ground. So, that's, the water does not get into the actual structure. It can go under the structure, it can't get into the structure. And by doing that, it enables the city to be eligible for the flood insurance program. So, if we don't have those rules adopted, the city could lose eligibility in the, in the flood insurance program, and not, individual homeowners wouldn't be eligible to get flood insurance. So, we are, we're very cognizant of it, and we're working on that on a lot of fronts, so...
Now, that's, that's an excellent question, and the city has done a lot to look at, at drainage and flooding. At one point, there was a tree in the middle of Gil's Branch, and it was hard for the water to get around it, and they cleaned it and, and put concrete and done a lot. In the moratorium, we looked at, at flooding and the way we, we built houses, and at one point, some friends of mine who lived on Main Street near Cedar Street called, they needed some help because their house was going underwater. I tried to get there. Luckily, I had a Jeep. I couldn't get past Tracy's because the water was so high. I waded and watered up to my knees at Main and Cedar Street, and they got water in their house. And that hadn't happened in a lot of years because of the things that the city has done. But it's something that we need to continue, because as long as we're putting more impervious ground cover on there, we have to address it.
And that's, yeah...
The fact that the floodplanes are, the flood maps are coming out sooner than they were in the past, it's a good, it's a good indication that people are taking a look at it now.
And with the 2019 stormwater drainage regulations, we adopted the new, we call it the Atlas 14. They, FEMA studied this area and discovered our rainfall totals were a lot higher than had previously been recorded, so our, our code takes that into account and requires you to detain and manage your, your drainage based off those numbers. So, and we updated our stormwater drainage bundle to include a lot more modern techniques that will make sure that private developers are maintaining and not flooding their neighbors, so...
Yeah, I just would encourage us to really, you know, rather than trying to keep up, that we look forward.
Yes.
You know, if we're going to be, if we're going to be designing things, let's think about what it's going to look like in 15 years or 10 years, rather than, you know, trying to just keep up, so...
And for this property in particular, before they can develop, they will have to do a final drainage plan to address drainage and making sure they're not flooding their neighbors or the roads, so...
And that's something that's relatively new, the requirement of the drainage plans to this extent.
To the extent, and that is actually the first step in everything we do, is the first step of every application process is drainage. So, it's not an afterthought, it's the first thing we think about, so...
I think Bastrop, when they did the moratorium and got everything squared away with flooding, it, it put us in a position that all the development that's been happening since, what was it, a couple of years ago?
2019, yeah.
All this current development is, is going to be in good shape, so we've done some really good work there. I just, I feel like we dropped the ball on the fire part of it, and it's simple stuff, in my opinion.
Fire and water, hand in hand. Given those, are there any more questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I'm going to abstain.
With one extension. Thank you very much. All right, we go to item number four. Item passes, by the way. I added number four. Updates. Update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items.
Yes, so, at the last city council meeting, the Pearl River, first reading for the annexation and the rezoning, the rezoning was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July meeting. That was the first reading here, the public hearing, first reading were conducted on both of those, and they both passed unanimously at council. There was a second zoning case that the commission heard at the July meeting for the 42 acres off of FM 20, and the applicant hasn't provided us any reason, but they postponed action on that item for now. I think there may have another interested buyer, so, that's possible. They didn't provide us with a concrete answer on why they were postponing, but they wanted to postpone the action to a later council date. So, that one's still pending.
Okay. Thank you. Item 4B. Planning and Development Department Monthly Project Volume Report.
Yes, so, for our, the month of July, we actually are a little bit slower on intake of new applications. So, we had 24 new single-family residential, which that's held pretty steady. We've been between 20 and 25 a month, and then the trade permits follow those. But otherwise, things have actually slowed down a little bit. That's kind of happens in the summer months, because everyone ramps up in the spring, get all their permits in hand, and then they go out and you see all the construction that's happening. So, there's a lot of construction, a lot of inspections going on, and making sure all the projects are getting closed out correctly, but they're not on the front side of us reviewing them. We are getting a lot of requests to talk about different parcels throughout town for commercial development, so I think, over the next couple of years, we'll see more of a trend towards commercial. Last few years, we've seen more residential. Now, we're switching to the commercial side, so I expect we'll be busy. Like I said, the other fun fact, we have a new planning staff member... member starting on September 12th. She'll be the Assistant Planning Director.
Yay.
And she's coming to us from the Houston area, and she has over 15 years of experience. So we're very much looking forward to, her name's Kiran, joining our staff on the 12th.
Oh, we can meet her.
She'll definitely be at the, the next meeting, or.
Yeah.
Yes, the next meeting. I have a list of projects for her already, so.
How big is the planning staff with her addition?
Total, we'll have 10 people in the department. Yeah, we were talking about it today. Currently, we have five, because we have three open, three open positions, and, well, with one of them being the assistant director, and then two people out on maternity.
Well, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you do, and that even at a lower volume, this is a, still a high number of, of projects that are coming across your desk every month. So thank you, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I agree. I'm sure we all do.
Second that.
All right. Item 4C. Individual requests from Planning and Zone Commissioners, that particular item's listed on future agendas. Is there anything that anyone would like to see discussed? Cynthia?
Yes, I just have a question, and, and we've spoken about this before. I think Pablo brought it up maybe last year. And it, it's regarding short-term rentals. And I don't know if we have any policy in place. I just know there are a lot of cities surrounding Bastrop that are having a lot of problems with their housing market because of investment properties being bought for short-term rentals. And so my question is, what's going on with that?
Sure. That, that is something we're keeping an eye on. There's actually a kind of committee of the smaller cities in the area, Fredericksburg being one of them, that have been discussing regulations around short-term rentals. And Viviana was the one serving on that committee and listening in on it and getting info. And so we're monitoring. At this point, we haven't seen that short-term rentals have, are becoming a problem. One of the things we are doing to address, just because it's, you know, in the code, it's one of those, if just strictly following the, the building codes, they're allowed through the International Residential Code to a point. And so we're requiring short-term rentals to get a certificate of occupancy, so we can see, make sure they have their fire extinguishers, make sure the smoke detectors are installed, and make sure they're not going over their occupancy. If they go hit a certain occupancy, then it throws it into the building code, which is for commercial. So that's something that we, if people are converting to an Airbnb, we require them to do that if we know about it. We're going to codify that in the building code as we move forward. We have some amendments to Chapter 3, which is where the building code lives, which is where the floodplain regulations live. We're working on those right now. And so we'll be specifically addressing short-term rentals, requiring them to have a CO, but not going so far as to have a rental registry or anything like that. So we'll at least, we'll know where they are, make sure that they're providing health and safety. But at this point, unless, we haven't had a lot of complaints. Usually, you start to get a lot of complaints about noise and parking. And so far, we haven't seen that trend in town, so.
I just want us to be real proactive on it, and not reactive, because I think that's what's happening a lot. And it changes the whole shape of neighborhoods, and it, it just changes the whole feel of the city. So I would like for us to be as aggressive as possible on that topic.
I would second that as well. And I think it's important to realize how it affects the home prices and affordability in the neighborhood. I am curious, do we have, like, enforcement in place to make sure that they do have a certificate of occupancy?
If we know that, if we know one exists, we'll reach out to them and tell them. But usually, it's, we're not proactively looking through to see. A lot of times, it's hard to tell if it's just someone's second home, or if it actually is an Airbnb, just looking at it from their outside. And we do have a number of people who own second homes in Bastrop, that their primary residence is somewhere else, and they live here just part of the year. So, but yes, we do, we will enforce it if we know that it's going on.
And just to share, one of the ways I know Austin is handling it, at least they were at one time, is they were, they only had so many, a bucket of these to hand out, and they had to be renewed by the owner. And so that's why you didn't have an oversaturation of, of a bunch of, you know, it was, maybe it was like, you know, South by Southwest, and everybody in the neighborhood did it, they wouldn't have that. So they would have it. You had to come in and get it. And then you had to follow rules. But the ones that did that were able to really advertise and really get out there, and I thought they were able to do a better product. The ones that didn't, you know, they were obviously flying under the radar. And so I guess, if I had advice, I would say, if we weren't concerned about the number of them, we could just say, we're only going to approve 30, or 40, or pick a number, and then they have to be spread apart.
And we can look at how, yeah, some of the cities our size have handled that, so.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to item five.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you.